All right, welcome Tyson. So if you can get us started here, maybe just give us a little bit about about your background and experience as it would lend itself to to serving in a role of council member and why you decided to to run for elected office at this time.
Yeah, so I know many of you probably heard this, but you know, my wife and I moved to Dubuque about eight and a half years ago. For job opportunity that we thought, you know, might last a couple of years. We weren't sure certain how long that was gonna be. And, you know, we've quickly realized very early on of being in Dubuque. The Dubuque was a place that we wanted to call home. We wanted to raise our family, you know, a couple of weeks after moving into Dubuque, we found out. Pregnant with our first child, and so that definitely changes the situation. And just, you know, I've really enjoyed being a part of the community and growing a business, getting to know businesses and and residents. Community members in Dubuque. And so, you know, early on, we started to give back. In my career here in Dubuque, from a standpoint of getting involved in community boards. You know, from the DRA to the River Museum, Art Museum, Chamber of Commerce, GDC, Field of Dreams. And so, you know, there's a lot of exciting stuff going on in Dubuque. And so I started to think about running for council. Probably about three years ago now, and had been kicking around the idea and talking to various people and kind of researching and really diving in and. My, my, my goal is to bring my business acumen. Which involves, you know, implementing physical responsibility. And my community involvement and my knowledge of the community. To the table to help, to help guide our city and and some of the the great things that we have that are moving in our direction. So.
Okay, great. Well, let's, let's dig into it. Tell me, tell me some of the things that you think are are going well for the city and and where you think the city needs to alter direction.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think we have some wind in our sails with the DO school announcement, the Field of Dreams. Coming online here, the art museum that is, you know, to be deconstructed here in a month or so and then started. Wonderwood Gardens Schmidt Island redevelopment, the sports complex. That was part of the, one of the major agenda items for the council's goal setting and then also obviously outlined last night. And then Vision 2030. And so we've got some really neat stuff and some real opportunities to lean into some growth opportunities for our community. I think with that, though, we do have some challenges, right? And I know these are all that we've been talking about, but it's, you know, we have not been growing as a community. So, you know, the article the THS recently posted is over the past five years, we've shrunk. According to the census data by one point two percent. And so, you know, that, that makes it, you know, first of all, makes it challenging. When you're not growing as a community, makes it challenging to do a lot of things, right? It makes it challenging to support. Housing, jobs, healthcare, safety and education, which I think you need all five of those things to be like hitting. On various levels, but definitely moving in the right direction to have growth and it has sustainable growth. And so I think there's also, it's not, you know, always, it's not just about growth necessarily, but there's also challenges with our infrastructure. And funding our infrastructure priorities, you know, council last year, 2024 goal setting, they had one infrastructure item. On their top 10 priority list. This year, there's three infrastructure items separate and one of them has 10 priority items underneath that. From a, you know, water sewage standpoint. So I think that's a real, it's a real problem and a problem that we've known about for a couple of decades now per, you know, consultants that have been telling us. You know what we need to do. And so we need to put together a plan. Of how we're going to attack that and and make sure that we're executing on that plan with, you know, attainable goals and things of that nature. You know, and then I'll say the last thing, a major priority is. Really looking at our first responders, you know, and being understaffed and, you know, I had the opportunity to go out on nine 11. The firehouses did an open house from eight to 10, went out and met with three of the fire stations and. You know, I just was introducing myself as a community member, as a, as a council candidate and was talking to firefighters. They said, hey. You know, we're understaffed by at least one person per truck. Industry standards is two. And so I asked him, I said, is that a, is it a budget issue or is it a people? Is it a person problem, meaning that people don't want to get into the field, you know, but I think I say that I ask that because. You know, the police force, I think that's more of a challenge of people, you know, there's not as much interest in in being, you know, police officers there had been historically. And so they said, it's absolutely a budget issue. They said, there's plenty of there, we would detract people if we got the budget allocation. So I think it's prioritizing. You know, that public safety, because in my mind, if we're not taking care of what's here, what we already have here today and taking care of our residents. You know, it's, it's going to be really hard to grow, right? So obviously that's now a top priority item. You know, in 2024 for council, it was police was prioritized. There was no mention of fire. Now fire and police are on there, which. So we're making steps in the right direction. I think, you know, part of the candidacy. And what I see is that, you know, we're already bringing some of these items to light and I think we're making some progress, which is good. So.
What do you think the council should be doing to help stimulate population growth? And, you know, you mentioned housing as well, and I is, is, is that a chicken egg thing? I mean, do you get population? When you have more, I mean, which one has to come first, I guess?
Yeah, so housing, you know, I mean, we have over 2,000 housing units in some form of development today. The study shows that the GDDC did said that we needed about 1,200 housing units. I'm a little concerned on the number of housing units that we have in some form or fashion of development. I don't know. The, I don't know where, how we're going to feel all 2,000 units if they all come through. Now, I will say. High, high probability, those 2,000 units are not coming through. I think we've all seen multiple projects being announced that actually don't come to fruition. Right? Um, so I think the housing units are going to be here. So then it's the question of. Is the mix right of the housing units? And maybe I'll put that to the side for a second and we can go back to that. And go to the jobs, because I do think we need to help facilitate job growth. Within our community and and some might say, hey, well, that's not council's job to create jobs. And I don't disagree with that, but. We should create a pro-business environment where, you know, and as I've said. Council doesn't need to like step or city government, I should say, doesn't need to step to the side. But city government needs to pave the path for helping businesses grow. And being a connector within those spaces. We have a lot of good organizations from ECIA. To the Chamber of Commerce, GDDC, we've got a lot of great organizations that can help be connectors. And help businesses grow and expand. I think first part of that is, you know, giving them the attention, businesses, the tension. To help out where, when and where needed, when they raise their hand. And so, you know, we, we do need to work on continuing to attract new businesses. From the outside to come in. I think with our infrastructure challenges, though. And some of the, you know, some of the constraints that we're putting on businesses, it's going to be hard to like get new ground up. Construction. With that, all that being said, I do think, you know, it's the chicken or the egg on housing jobs. It's also the chicken or the egg on, you know, healthcare, safety and education. And making sure that we have those things going in the right direction. You know, when I think about education, I think about, you know, some of the school buildings that have deferred maintenance. I think about Jackson and Washington and that. Whole item that that's on the docket here for the November 4th election. So I think, you know, I'd much rather be talking about. Building new schools because we're growing versus versus consolidating, right? So.
So just if you could, Tyson, clarify a little bit there. So, so what do you see the council or city administration's role in growing? Population and what differently do you see? GDDC has been intimately involved in trying to grow population. So just kind of clarify that for me.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the, as I think about it, there's. Couple of things. One is the UDC Uniform Development Commercial Code, right? That has been worked on. I think it needs more work to provide more clarity. To help that, to help businesses grow and expand and want to invest here, right? And so I think. By their policies and their initiatives, whether that's. First responders, fire police, whether it's, you know, helping out on the UDC and making sure we have a clear path on growth. Things of that nature. I think that is what is going to stimulate population growth and, you know, let the GDDCs of the world go out and actually talk and look at new businesses. And bring those in, but we got to have, you know, parks that are being maintained. We have to have adequate staffing on, on, on first responders. We need to have, you know, I'll say it, we need to have commercial air service, right? These are things that are like poor things that the city council can help. And it can facilitate to get job growth going to make sure like the table stakes are there. So that when we talk to a new company that's coming, we can do that. Or when we have a company here in Dubuque that wants to expand. That we can make it clear for them, whether it's through the UDC or or through these other items I mentioned of why they should expand in Dubuque.
And when you. Do you have some examples of of cases where, I mean, you mentioned UDC, you mentioned parks, obviously, we can talk about air service separately, but. Do you have any example or knowledge of? The current state being barriers to business expansion or population growth? I'm trying to connect the dots here.
Yeah, so, um. I, so quite honestly, there's countless examples, right? I mean, it's, and probably shouldn't share names, but. I mean, there's, there's countless examples which. Uh, you know, stems back to really the, they pointed the developer's letter, right? That was sent in three years ago ish now. That was signed off. I, you know, I was one of that signed it. Obviously it's out there. And I'm fine signing it. Of reasons, what, what has, you know, stifled business growth, you know, I think. There's most recently, I think you can look at Callahan Construction on Cedar Cross. Right? You can look at that we have to have a septic system. In the new multifamily apartment development that they're putting in, that's coming at the burden of the taxpayers. Unfortunately, until we can tap into the system. There's. A project that there's another project on Cedar Cross that has been delayed by over six months because of. Ultimately, UDC related type items that couldn't get a clear reading of the UDC. There was, you know, back and forth amongst the business owner. And that's not, you know, that's not a contractor, right? I think that we talked, there's a lot of noise about like that the contractors and are upset and it's, you know, there's business owners here in Dubuque. I've heard there's a couple of examples of businesses doing development and things outside of the community. Because they just see it too burning some to do stuff inside the community, meaning they're going down to, they're going to Waterloo, they're going down to Quad Cities. You know, I think Rob McDonald's example is probably the biggest just because of the dollar amount and the size of the project. But, you know, he is, he says, you know, he said, when they increase the water pressure. Out to test for Simmons, the Simmons plant, they flooded the foundry. The foundry had to be closed for a couple of days. No one, only one council member called him and, you know, talked to him about it. Then after that. There was a number of other issues that occurred and just a lack of attention from council and and he said, you know, at the end of the day. I got, when we were talking about building our new family, I got calls, calls from two governors. Governor Iowa, Governor Wisconsin, never got a call from our mayor. And so I think that, you know, the tension. Like piece of that and and making sure that, you know, we're taking care of our businesses here. And sometimes it's not even as much. Quite honestly, like this is hard to quantify it because it's not even as much as, hey. Do we need a good UDC code? Do we need, you know, folks on parks, recreation, sports facility, all these things? Yes. But at the end of the day, it's like, we need to create just a communication dialogue with our community. For them to give us input and be willing to accept that input from, from. The individuals in our community to listen to them and how give them a platform.
Tyson, in fairness, on the AY McDonald project, wasn't that limited by available land?
Um, you know, so I don't know the answer to that. That could be fair. I do know that Rob said, he said, and I think he put this in the paper even, he's like, it was never even. Was never even an option because the way he, the issues that had come up. So even if there was available land and his, what he's communicated is like, it's not even a, it's not even an option. So. I think land would have been a real challenge. That's for sure, but.
Yeah, he, he actually wrote something. For a, for a potential op ed and and said that. When he ran by GDDC, the, the land option, they were like, don't have it in the, in the city. But at any rate, yeah, I, I hear your point on it. Um, I question about in regards to the infrastructure and spending on infrastructure. What do you think, I mean, because we always, you know, the city spends some money on infrastructure every year. In terms of, and I'm thinking about the sanitary sewer, you know, issue and and some of that kind of stuff. Obviously, you know, hindsight, we could have allocated more earlier. Where do you see, you know, if we needed to turn up the volume on spending for sanitary sewer and other infrastructure over the last five years. Where would you have, if had you been on the council, where would you say we should have spent less? We're going to spend more on public safety and more on infrastructure. Where could we be spending less?
Yeah, so. I think a couple of things here is. I think we, we have not, so five years, right? We haven't grown our tax base. Because our population hasn't grown, quite honestly, right? So we have to work within our budget and our means of our budget. I, our city size of our government has expanded. You know, to the size it is with over 700 employees, you know, the 40 plus departments. And I think we, there's, there's allocation within the budget. To make sure that it balanced to fund these projects, right? There's also federal dollars, I'm sure grants type items we could have applied for, given the aging infrastructure. That would have been a funding source out there. That would have been, that would have been a big one. There's, so I think, you know. Unfortunately, the growth thing has been going on for, you know, 20 plus years, right? So like, we should have started, it'd been hard to say like. Five years ago, we should have started funding this, but I think if you look back 20 years ago. And saying, we need to start, you know, having a capital allocation funds for these. To, we know that what we're coming up against based on the studies that we have received. And here's the things, you know, that we need to prioritize because now, you know, we're. You know, 200, 300 million in the hole on the infrastructure side of where we need to be. So it's going to be really hard. It's going to be, we're going to do it, but it's going to be, it's going to be a real challenge. Because now we're going to be chasing. The growth, we're not going to be able to attract or we're going to be chasing the growth to increase our tax base or get our tax base up. Based on what we've have, so.
Well, and, you know. Tyson, with any business, there are things that we all should have done 20 years ago and 30 years ago to ensure our future and prosperity. But it didn't happen. So all we can do is, is play the cards that were dealt with. So I, I think what I'm hearing you say is. Related to the sewer issue and what you as a council person would have done in the last, say, five years. Is you felt like maybe. People who were in leadership positions at that time missed the boat and didn't apply for grants that would be available. Is that one?
That's part of it. And I do think we haven't, you know, allocated funds appropriately where they need to be, right? Like, I don't think we have, like, in the city budget, I don't think we have a. Budget issue. Like, it's not that we don't have the money. I think the question is, where are we spending those dollars? And are we spending those dollars on the best? Items that should be spent on to prioritize.
And, and again, I'm, I'm saying what I think I heard, not, I want to make, just clarify here. You had said that in looking at where you might have looked for funding for these, knowing that there's money there, but where do we put it? Is perhaps we spent it on staff when we should have spent it on infrastructure.
No, I, so yeah, I would not say that we necessarily spent it on staff, right? That's something that I'll have to, when I, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, that's something that will, you know, get better understanding of. You know, the whole staff makeup, quite honestly, and how that looks. I do think there's certain things that we are funding that necessarily have been prioritized over others. You know, that we've got to look at and say, is there dollars that are available? And I was going to say before, yeah, it is easy to be the armchair quarterback, you know, let's say, look back 20 or five years. I mean, obviously it's not productive. I do think it's good to have a. Understanding of the history and where we've come from. But ultimately, we've got to look forward here and figure out how we're going to fund these investments. So, so I, I think it's. Just physical responsibility, I think, is what it comes down to. And, you know, as you look at the makeup of the council. And historically, and their business acumen is what I'd question is to say, hey. Are we, do we have a good diversification on council? That have representation from business, nonprofit, civil leaders, everyone, everything of that nature. So, and I don't think historically, we've had a good balance. So.
Okay, I guess, yeah, just kind of dial back to, to, to my question on, on city spending. Just kind of in general, I guess, are there areas where you think? I mean, it's, it's, we can all come up with places where we, we'd like to spend more money. Where would you think we'd like, we should be spending less? I don't know if parking is one of those issues for you or where, where you stand on that?
Yeah, so parking, I mean, it would definitely be one of those areas. I mean, we, we've spent a lot on, you know, I mean, the. The TIF for parking is in the parking structures is one area where we've, quite honestly, we've spent money, right? So, you know, looking at those in the investment in the ROI on that, it just, it's not there. From how is TIF going to get repaid from a parking structure, right? I mean, it's not developing a tax base. That's out there, that's able to. So, you know, I, I think we've got to look closely at parking. I, I've asked early on when moving to Dubuque, I said, you know. Seems like parking's pay, charging for parking in downtown is a barrier to. Growth in, in attraction of coming, people coming down. And so I do think, obviously, the parking ramps, I think should be, there should be a fee, but. On-street parking, I think we should take a look at and and maybe think about loosening that up.
Do you think to, to get into the air service thing, do you think the city should be financially supportive of, of the? The revenue guarantee to, to keep the, what we have for existing air, air service?
Um, so. I think, so first, we definitely need commercial air service. That's first and foremost. I do wonder if we. I do worry that it's not going to be sustainable. I think we all do. And I think time, time is going to tell. I think we've approved, obviously, we've approved it through June. Um, we've got to raise some additional funds, you know, 750,000 to get, to fully get there, but I think we'll get there. Based on everything I hear out in the community. I do, I do worry about some of the facts around. Denver Air and if they are the right choice. For us. I mean, obviously, it's, that's too late. We're too late in the equation in that. But what I mean by that. Is and nothing against Denver Air, but we are, according to my research, we are the only community that Denver Air serves is not essential air service, EAS. So if you looked at Denver Air's business plan, business model, it, they have a great business model. I mean, they can go to communities and be guaranteed. A certain passenger load based on those markets have EAS. That's not so the case for Dubuque, right? And so we've had to subsidize that, which is, you know, hey, we got to do something to try to get air service coming back. Concern I have is that, that's one, is like, do we fit in Denver Air's business plan? Obviously, we had the dollars from a grant standpoint. So we had the SCASD grant funds, so we, we fit it for a period of time. But long term, I worry about that. The other side is, is we fall off the reservation system. For United, Delta and American, meaning the Denver Air flights do. And, and so sometimes you go out and you just don't see the flight at all. It's not available. So that's a real challenge and something that we constantly are monitoring from my understanding and and getting added back. The other challenge is. The last one that I, that I've heard is, so a lot of companies in my prior organization, we had a travel app. That you had to book through for corporate travel, for air, hotel, rental car. And if. And, and Denver Air is not on most of those travel apps. And so these companies, you know, larger companies in Dubuque, they can't even book. Through Denver Air if they want it to. So that's a barrier. And so I, I look at these and I go, we have. Some chips that are stacked against us in this equation. I think we need to, I think we need to have advocacy at the federal level for EAS or an equivalent of that program. And I think, you know, some of the data we're going to be able to get out of where we are. Or what we're going to see here between now and June will be helpful in that equation. So.
First question from my chair, Tyson, is. The, the current council has approved that spending till the end of June. If you were sitting on that council today, would you have supported that?
No.
Okay.
So how does that? Just how does that, I guess I'd say jive with your, your initial comment is we absolutely need local air service. And so. Not voting, voting against that. Would basically have shut down a commercial air service in Dubuque.
Yeah, so here, let me explain why I said no. And I was thinking through all these reasons. So. One is. From my understanding, right? And what I've been reading and what I've been told. Is we were told by Matt Skinner. That we needed 18 to 24 months to see. The seasonality, if you will, of the air service, to see what the true market will bear. And it's 18 to 24 months. No one knew the passenger load going in, right? So this is, you know, this is like the hindsight thing, but no one knew the passenger load going in, but we know some data now. As of, you know, the point of this vote, we know the data and we know what we're probably going to have to subsidize it for, which is how we came up with a budget number. So. We ultimately. Engage, went into this without full funding allocation in my mind, fully planned out and without a solid plan on how we were going to get from. Day one to 24 months. Now, you might say that's not fair because, okay, we didn't know what passenger loads are, but, okay, so that, that, but that's, that's a struggle where we are. I also, if we're having to subsidize it on both sides, the passenger side. And on the airline side. And we still aren't getting to the passenger loads that we need to be at. It's like, at the end of the day, the customer is always right. And on the airline side, and we still aren't getting to the passenger loads that we need to be at, it's like, at the end of the day, the customer's always right. Um, whether we want to believe it or not, whether we like it or not, the customer's right. And they're just not using it. Um. And so I, I would have, you know, the, there's. Everything that's like pointing in, in all the other reasons I said, the reservation system, not being on the travel apps, like, we, I just think we have. A lot more work to do, um, to get there. And I really wonder if Denver Air, like, is we fit within their business model?
So when Denver Air came into service with Dubuque Regional Airport, there were no other options. Delta was not an option, American was not an option, United was not an option, and we had an air carrier that. Wanted to work with us. So. Should we have said, thanks, but no thanks?
You know, so here's the thing is, in hindsight. I would say yes. At the moment, I probably would have said, I would have, we have done the same thing that we did. Um. I do think we should have, you know, knowing what we know now, and I do think the next time, let's, you know, hope this works and let's, um. You know, let's make sure we've got a good plan in place as we go forward here. I know we're putting pieces that in place now. Um, I do think we should have, you know, ultimately had a, a, a better funding strategy, um, out there. Than what we should have had. But I, I, at the time, it would have been hard not to. Say yes, because we do need commercial air service.
Just to maybe put a bow on the air service thing, I know you mentioned, uh, you know, the essential air service status. How familiar are you with the? Uh, efforts to get Dubuque included in essential air service and the current status and, and with. Elected officials in terms of making that happen, uh, uh, at the, you know, federal level, for example?
Yeah, I know there was a group that went to DC here earlier this year, um, and asked our very selective officials to be included, and they said it's closed, you're not getting in. Um. You know, and so also from that meeting, I think it came out that we need data, uh, to be able to show where we are from a community standpoint. Um, so, a- and I think it's gonna be, there's still gonna be a couple of things working against us, right? Which is the number of, I mean, we have one of the busiest airports, if not the busiest airport in Iowa. Uh, given the UD Flight School. And so there's gonna be some data working against us on that equation. Um, you know, I look at it on a go-forward basis, and I say, you know, one, we need advocacy. At the federal level. Are they gonna reopen EAS? I don't know the answer to that. Is there other programs that we could get in through, um, or create because of this? Potentially, you know, new stuff gets created and put into bills all the time. Um, and that's something we need to explore and think about. The other thing I think about is, you know, the public-private partnership side of this, which is ultimately what we're kind of asking to do today. Um, is, or we've done, um, is, should we lean in further into public-private partnership? Because, you know, when we lost air service. With American, I was on the GDDC board. And what we said is, it's gonna cost five and a half million dollars a year to get air service back. And if we really want air service back, the business community and the individuals should lean in and say, we're gonna fund it because we believe this is what we need. Um, I think based on the growth and what we have anticipated with the DO school, medical school, Field of Dreams. You know, art museum, I think, you know, we should try to figure this out and saying, hey, how can we, how can we lean into this? But at the same time, I think we've got to make sure that we show what, if we're gonna do this, what is gonna be the ROI for this investment, right? Like, hotel motel taxes are gonna increase. You know, we're gonna be able to create more tourism dollars, restaurants, um, stuff of that nature. I think you could really show a correlation of that. Um, on a go-forward basis. So it's gonna take some work, um, but I think there's kind of three avenues we could. Potentially explore with, based on what I said there, so.
Okay, um, one job that will, the, the next council will face in, in, uh, the next year or so is. Um, searching for a replacement for the city manager. Tell us a little bit about how you think councils should approach that. Uh, what qualities you'd be looking for in a city manager and, uh, maybe how they'll stack up with what, what we have had, uh, for thirty-plus years?
Yeah, um, so it is gonna be a big role to fill, obviously, you know, being Mike's been in. Uh, the seat for thirty-plus years. So there's no doubt about it. I think it's a, it's a very serious decision, um, for us to make and, uh, um. From a overall community and vibrancy of, and everything that I've said that we have, that's. The exciting things that we have that are moving in our direction. Um, I think leadership traits, I think we definitely, you know, need someone that has. Uh, that's a good leader, is a good delegator, um, empowers their people, motivates their people, um, and is a visionary. Um, you know, it's, it's gonna take some additional forethought and some vision. To be able to get from where we are today to where we want to be, um, with these projects. And I think that person, in my mind, should come from a city, you know, of maybe a little bigger than where we are today. Um, you know, because we do want to grow, um, or has taken a city from, you know, a smaller city and has already shown that they can grow it. Um, and have done these things. So I think a proven track record, um, there. Um, I think someone that's gonna be. You know, uh, open-minded to looking into kind of some of the legacy things that we've had in place. Um, we've got some tremendous assets. That we have, uh, as a city with some of our riverfront property. Um, and so kind of leaning into some of those to saying, hey, how can we? Not sell, but how can we help development of those? Um, and what does that look like? For our tax base, what does that look like for Dubuque? What does that look like for a total quality of life? I think someone that came from. A community and showed that they made substantial progress in quality of life, I think is equally important as to everything. You know, that we've been talking about from a growth standpoint. Um, I think it's, we need to make sure that the people here that are in Dubuque, um. You know, have nice amenities and nice things. Um, I'm not saying we don't necessarily, because, you know, one of the reasons why we decided to stay here. Um. But I do think there's some opportunities for us and, you know, the envision twenty thirty is a great example of some of the stuff in it, uh, from last night about what, what. The community came up with that, uh, or things that we can work on. So.
Tyson, you mentioned looking at legacy things. I mean, along with everything else that's going on, the track record, but what are those legacy things that you think that the city manager and new city manager should be looking into?
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, the UDC codes, one, um, the process under that, our, uh, structure of, of. Uh, entities is another to say, you know, should we? Should we be, yeah, give me an example. Should we be aligned to GDDC as closely as we are? Right? We're half the budget of GDDC, uh, is what the city gives. Is that, is that the right thing to be doing? Um, or should businesses be funding that solely? Um, you know, I think if they're truly having like. If they're on mission, GDDC and doing what they need to be doing, serving the business community, I, I don't know if the city does need to be funding that. Um, you know, there's examples like that, that I think if you just go down the line and look at those, uh. The allocation of dollars or the allocation of resources, you know, what, what have we outsourced? Um, and what have we taken on? That necessarily isn't. Part of our, you know, top fifteen goals per se.
Do you have a sense of whether, uh, what's typical, whether other communities and, and smaller cities. Work with a community development group and, and in terms of funding, uh, do you think Dubuque is unusual in, in that arrangement?
Uh, that's a good question. I do not. I don't know the answer to that. I will research that.
So, so a little bit of a different direction, um. As we talk about finances. So Tyson is the president of a local bank. How does that get in the way of anything that, um. You might need to do representing the city as it relates to finances and investments in banks and things like that? What, what does that look like?
Yeah, um, so this question has come up quite a bit, uh, actually kind of came up a little bit at the League of Limits Voters, but it's come up online quite a bit. Um, so there is specific code, uh, Iowa code that outlines kind of what. Your role can be, uh, at a city council level. Um, so, you know, obviously. Bank banker, bank president, bank board member can sit on city council. Um, I think, you know, my priority is, is to focus on. The residents of Dubuque, um, by all means, and, and I will, you know, abide by Iowa code. Uh, as it relates to abstaining from any conflicts, uh, that are out there. So no different than what I've done, you know, on my boards that I've served on. There's been conflicts that have brought up, you know, the biggest one is DRA, right? And all the, the various grant funds that are. Given out, um, associated with that. There's obviously conflicts that arise there. Um, I don't. You know, foresee it being any barrier, um, to be an effective council person, um. From the, the bringing, you know, level of dialogue or knowledge to the table. Will I have to abstain? On occasion, just like any probably current councilperson has for various reasons, sure. Um, but, you know, that's, um. I mean, it's, it's ethics. And it's. Biding by codes and things of that nature. I mean, it's what I've done for nearly two decades in banking, right? I mean, we're the, one of the most regulated spaces. That there is. Um, and I think you don't have, you can't be an effective banker or business person, I'll say. I mean, not just banker, but business person. If you're not of the highest. Respected caliber from an ethical standpoint. Um, being your Dylan was people's prized possessions, right? Their money, so.
So the top position, to the, the top position in any bank requires a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort. Um, you also, as you indicated, serve on a number of boards in the community. Does Tyson have the bandwidth to be a council member too?
Yeah, this one's come up too. Uh, so, uh, the, um. I should ask you, so these answers, are you, I read the, sorry, off-script just for a second. Uh, I read the, um. The endorsements today that the TH gave, uh, which was great, but are these answers gonna be going in like verbatim into the article, potentially?
I mean, n- not typically.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. So I do, so here's my plan with this, right, is if I'm elected, I will be stepping off. Almost all the boards that I'm currently on. Uh, because of that ex officio, like, some of them are ex officio roles, right, for DRA? And so, um. The only one that I might not be is the Field of Dreams. Um, we've. I've got to work on that one. Um, just because we're mid-construction, there's a lot of stuff that we're working on there and it's important. Um, but, so what I've looked at is from a time allocation standpoint. From the bank standpoint, it's actually gonna be, it's gonna help. My role is like putting my banker hat on, like, it's gonna help my role at the bank because. Council is largely meets at evenings, afternoons, late afternoons, early evenings, right? Most of the boards I'm on meet during the day. Um, so I'll actually be able to spend more time in the office, uh, because of that, right? And that. Will help. The behind-the-scenes stuff that I do, I think it'll be a wash, um, quite honestly, with council and all the boards that I'm on. Um, and then the personal side, you know, I mean. You know, my wife and I, we have fully vested, vetted this and discussed it, and, um, she's fully supportive and, you know, she agrees with, you know, we, uh, it's important for. It's important for Dubuque and, um, I'm passionate about, we're both passionate about Dubuque, so. So, yeah, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna balance itself out pretty well.
Um, what do you think would, would be the most difficult thing for you personally? Uh, I mean, this, this position comes. With a, with a lot of, uh, challenges and headaches. Is, is there an area, obviously, you're familiar with budgets, you, you bring the business acumen, but. Wait, is, is there any piece of this job that maybe doesn't lean into your strengths or that, what do you think would be most difficult for you?
Yeah, um, I. There's definitely gonna be. Some, there's definitely gonna be a learning curve, right? Um, and so. Even though, you know, with my business experience, you know, I'm not naive to think, hey, I've never served in a public office. Um, there's already been a learning curve throughout the campaign. Um, in terms of, you know. What, you know, what you learn, what you hear, um, I think, you know. I feel like I'm a fairly likable person. Uh, I feel like I'm a fairly approachable person. Um. Maybe I'm just biased and people don't actually like me. But, uh, but, um, and so I think that, that is gonna be. Um, I think prioritizing. Those discussions and those priorities, um, and making sure that we're doing. Like the best thing for everyone. Um, I think that's gonna be part of the learning curve, right? I think, I think there's gonna be a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussion that's gonna occur. Um, you know, I've already heard a lot of great ideas. Um, it's no different than what the council has to do today with, you know, their planning process and probably why it takes three days, uh. To kind of bring all those ideas together and then share them. Um, and, uh, and I think that's part of the learning curve, right? Um, and. I think at the same time, though, one thing I'm looking forward to is making sure that the community has a voice amongst council. And so when I say that. One of the things I plan on implementing is a monthly. Town hall type discussion where community members can come, ward members can come and ask questions of me. Right? And so that I can hear what they, what's on their mind, what's important to them, um, and then be able to share that feedback. And I think that's, uh. That's one of the things I'm looking forward to. So like, at the same time, I think it's. What will be a challenge, but I think leaning into that to say, you know, I do want to hear more from what's happening. And actually what's happening in the streets and, and, and the town, so.
And, and if, as you get that kind of feedback from constituents, say, on a particular issue and heading into a particular vote about. Whether or not we spend money on this particular project, um, how, how will you weigh? What the, the community, what you, what you're, the feedback you're hearing from community as far as how they want you to vote, if that differs from what you think is personally. The best thing for the greater good?
Yeah, so. This one, uh, I. I think, you know, one of the things I, I, I worry about historically, like, are we listening to our, um. Our, our constituents, right? Um, so. By the way, my thoughts on the airport, like, while I've shared some what I believe are facts based on my knowledge of the airport. I have not knocked on a single person's door that have said, we should support the air service, we should fund the air service, right? So regardless of what I thought so far, and maybe I should have said that earlier, like, that's an example, like, a great example in my mind, and I've thought a lot about this, about, hey. My role as council is not about necessarily what I believe. It's about what's best for the people to be, what's best for my constituents. Uh, or the constituents, um. And so I don't think, you know, from, I don't see that as being an issue. Um, you know, I. I've worn multiple hats before, um, being on various boards and being in the world bank. Um, and I think it's just, you know, saying, hey, this isn't. This isn't about me or my projects, um, and what I believe, you know, I'll have thoughts, right, as being a taxpayer myself. Um, but it's about serving the greater, uh, community, so.
Uh, anything else that, that we haven't asked you about today that, that you feel you'd like, uh, us to know or, or voters to know? And maybe particularly as, as they're discerning between you and your opponent. I mean, we're gonna have a new, new city council member. Um, and, you know, you, you represent some different ideas. What, what would, what would your kind of putting a, putting a bow on it? What would your? Comment be to voters?
Yeah, um, so I think there is, uh, I, I will say there's a big difference between, you know, my opponent and myself, um. Yeah. Um, so I think there is, uh, I, I will say there's a big difference between, you know, my opponent and myself. Um, you know, there's, uh, you know, from, from all aspects, quite honestly. Um, so, you know, I asked the community, it's like, wh- what would they? They can't have both. So what would they rather have, right? Would they rather have a proven business leader, someone that's raised in a family, someone that's very involved in the community, that's vested in the community, that started a business in the community to help guide the city on a council level? And one that, you know, brings the financial acumen to the table, or, um, do they want a retired NICC instructor, um, you know, that has, you know, her kind of status quo agenda that thinks everything's good, uh, in the city and we're going in the right direction?
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, for your time and for putting yourself out there. It's a, it's a big, it's a big leap to, to run for public office and, uh, and take on all the, the headaches that I guess it, uh, that come with it. But, um, appreciate you, uh, stepping up and good luck the rest of the way.
Yeah. Well, thanks for everything you guys do too. It's, uh, it's impactful. It's been, uh, even more so on the, the campaign, uh, here on everything you guys are doing from a editorial standpoint. So I appreciate, appreciate what you guys do.
Good deal. Thanks, Tyson.
All right. Thank you. Have a good weekend.
You too.